I got a button. This is a good sign. This is the right one. We have volume and I'm buffering. And we got noise. This is good. It's working.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meetings. If you'd please stand and join me in our flag salute and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very flag for which it stands, one nation, united in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Before we begin our meeting today, we do have interpreting materials at the back of the room. If you need interpreting materials, we have earphones and so forth that encourage you to take care of that now. I'll announce that again when we get to the matter that will probably pertain to you. Our first item is the recognition of someone who has 26 years of county service. And before I say another word, I'd like to ask for our Human Resources Director to please come forward. I know he had a few words he wanted to share with us. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. It's a pleasure for me. We have Becky. Come on up here. It's a pleasure for me to be here today to honor Becky, who is retiring after nearly 27 years of service. And I just wanted to read a little bit about some of the things about Becky that I think you might find interesting. Becky has a marvelous sense of humor. I will tell you that that was what endeared her to me from day one. She joined the county on November 7th of 1983 as an eligibility worker at the age of 15, wasn't it? She shifted into the clerical series in 1984, promoting to office Assistant III in 1987. Then in 1989, she left the well-funded, subvented world of health and human services for the more tenuous, cross-eyed, stepchild environs of central personnel. Her journey through the labyrinth of human resources included stints in support services, payroll, and benefits. A majority of today's county employees enjoy the correct pay scale because of Becky's attention to detail. And her last few years in benefits displayed her helpfulness and compassion for our employees. During Becky's 27 years of service, evaluations are replete with comments like, "You are the consummate team player. I've never received complaints about you, only compliments. You are doing a remarkable job and your contributions are greatly appreciated. Your wealth of knowledge has been a real asset." Now, speaking of this wealth of knowledge, it manifested itself as her career came to a close. During her almost 27 years, she was very judicious in the use of sick leave, resulting in a balance of over 2,000 hours, whereupon, following a wellness assessment, Ms. Buckingham undertook a series of 32 elective medical procedures, effectively postponing and spiking her retirement. Some of these procedures were of dubious necessity, including ear lobe lifts, eyelash enhancements, follicle regeneration, and cuticle restoration. Nevertheless, her imaginative application of human resources policies acquired over 21 years with the county has elevated her to the highest rank of creativity and achievement. I, along with her envious colleagues in human resources, wish her well and Godspeed. Congratulations, Becky.
Becky, you will have a rebuttal time here if you'd like. The late Jim Maples used to refer to the county seal as the highest form of honor that we can present to anyone on behalf of our county, and it is my privilege here this morning to present you with our county seal, presented to Rebecca, how's that for formal Buckingham, Human Resources Specialist II, in appreciation of your 26 years of service and dedication to the community and to Tulare County March of 2010. Congratulations to you.
Couple of things.
Sure.
Just want to thank everybody that's been part of this experience, this 26 years. I've had a fabulous time. I don't care what anybody says about the county. They're okay with me. And I want to thank everybody for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now at this time, we'd like to have a presentation by Tina Terrell of the Sequoia National Forest regarding the Giant Sequoia National Monument Draft Environmental Impact Statement, Film Commission Agreement with the Counties, and the Tulare-Kern Resource Advisory Committee. Tina, welcome this morning.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt for a minute to make the announcement in Spanish for the equipment?
Oh, yes, please. Sorry about that, Tina. And I should say, because it wasn't in our presentation, that Tina is the supervisor of the Sequoia National Forest and the largest landowner in Tulare County.
Morning, Board members. It's been a while, I think over a year, since I have briefed you on what's been going on on the Giant Sequoia National Monument. And so, a couple of things I wanted to let bring to your attention. We are still working on the Giant Sequoia National Monument Plan. We're about a year behind of where I want it to be. Issues came up over the past three months, but I can basically state that the document will come out for the public review probably the first week in August, around August 4th or 5th. There will be a 90-day public comment period since it is a draft. And we will be having public meetings, one here in Visalia, one in Porta- one here in Visalia, Delaware Science, one in Porterville, one in Dunlap, where our offices, one in Kern River, where our offices, a couple in Los Angeles, since we do know there are people down in Los Angeles area who are interested in, and one in San Francisco. I will be getting to the board the dates and locations of those meetings, but I wanted to come and let you know that we are behind, but the draft should be coming out. Once the draft is out and 90-day public comment, I assume it will take about six months to then come out with a final. Now, that's high hopes since it's taken three years to come out with a draft, but I think we can still get it out in six months based on the comments we get from the public. The reason that the draft has taken so long, it's been a couple of major issues we've been dealing with that this board is probably familiar with, which is how should the monument be managed based on, one, what the proclamation states from President Clinton in April 2000, as well as, two, trying to make sure that we provide the necessary services on the forest, on the monument, which deals with fuel reduction, as well as the regeneration and management of the Giant Sequoia Grove. So, that has taken a lot more time to get that analysis going. We did finish the Giant Sequoia inventory last October, so we have not fully analyzed all of that data, but that will be included in the draft when it comes out. So, wanted to make sure everybody was aware about that. The documents didn't come yet. The second area I want to talk about was the Resource Advisory Committee. Now Supervisor, Ashida Supervisor Ennis were involved in us forming that committee. That got formed early this year. We actually sent the proposals into the Secretary of Agriculture last year. The Resource Advisory Committee is basically based off of the Secure Rule Act of 2000 that got amended in 2005. I do have handouts, but I don't think I have enough, and they were making some copies for me. Oh, you do have. Oh, thank you. Okay. If we want to hand those out to everybody. This is a PowerPoint that basically explains the legislation. Right now, there is about $300,000 sitting in Forest Service accounts that's available to the Resource Advisory Committee when they get fully functioning to allocate resources. Under the Secure Rule Act, which is based off of the Payment to States that came into existence in the 1914, if I remember. 1908 was back to the Payment to States 25% Fund. That particular law was based off of how much timber receipts was coming off the national forests that a percentage of that would go back to counties, mostly because of the huge land base of the federal land that is not taxed. Everyone is aware that our timber program has gone down substantially over the past 20 years. And so, in 2000, Congress passed a law called the Secure Rule Schools Act of 2000, which basically identified that the top three years that counties were receiving funds, they would continue to receive those funds from the federal government, and they would be put into titles, basically Title I, Title II, Title III, and come back to the county for their use. Normally, the counties would then use that money for roads and schools. Title II and Title III were part of the law, and it was a way for funds to go back, not necessarily for roads and schools, but go back to be used for fuel reduction or trail work, basically stewardship work on the national forest. This county in 2000 decided not to form a Resource Advisor Committee and basically accept the receipts. The law was amended in 2008 and basically identified that the counties don't have an option of not forming a RAC. If they did, they would actually lose almost 15% of the funds. And so, working with Supervisor Ashida Supervisor Ennis, along with Kern County Supervisor McQuiston, we formed a RAC that got sanctioned earlier this year by the Secretary. The RAC has met three times. They actually have a meeting this Thursday, and they have a chair, and they will be moving to develop a grant process to spend the $300,000. The money that's in the account is a revolving account, which means every year additional money comes in. There would be an additional $100,000 that would come into account probably later on this year, which makes $400,000 that Kern County and Tulare County gets to allocate for Title II and Title III funds. Most of the funds from those programs and other RACs go towards national forest land, but under the new legislation, funds can actually go on private property. So, this is really exciting, that additional funds come into Tulare County that can actually benefit not only the national forest, the national monument, but also private property up in the mountains that we can use towards fuel reduction. So, I wanted to make sure that the County Board Supervisor was aware that the RAC is functioning right now, and hopefully, we will move forward with the grant process. Probably not after this meeting on Thursday, but probably the next meeting that will occur in July. All of the meetings of the Resource Advisory Committees are posted in the Federal Register and put into the newspaper so the public can attend those meetings. And right now, I think it's going pretty good. Any questions about the Resource Advisory Committees? I know that was a quick one. The last, thank you. The last point I wanted to bring up was the Film Commission. For a few years, the Forest Service, mostly the forests of Southern California, which are the Angeles National Forest, which is in Los Angeles County, the Cleveland National Forest, which is in San Diego County, the San Bernardino National Forest, which is in Orange Riverside, actually Riverside in San Bernardino County, and the Los Padres National Forest, which takes the coast from Monterey all the way down to Santa Barbara. They have signed an agreement with the Film Commission, mostly Los Angeles County. And what the agreement does, it expedites processes for people who want to come and film in the county. It was something that, when I was on the Cleveland National Forest in San Diego, that I supported because it allowed an opportunity for entities that wanted to film, that they went to the Film Commission, and then we would expedite the permit for them to come out and film on the national forest. Anytime you do anything on the national forest, a permit or authorization is given. And in many cases, in particularly if you go into the same location, even though it's a different permits, many times that we would, basically, it would take time for us to process that permit. So, we signed an agreement with the Film Commission that would expedite the process that now would take normally two to three weeks. It would take three to seven days. That agreement came up for exploration, and we signed a new agreement. But what we did is we extended that agreement to other counties. Kern County was interested, and the Sequoia signed in that agreement, and so I signed the agreement earlier this year. The agreement was signed with also Fresno County, but Tulare County did not sign the agreement. There was some delay in trying to get the Film Commission here in Tulare County to sign the agreement. And so, we moved forward with the agreement signature. I have copies for you. And what I would like to request is even though we have an agreement that's signed with the Film Commissions, I would like to start negotiations with Tulare County to see if they are interested in signing this agreement. There is some filming that occurs in Tulare County by the media, film industry, mostly up, of course, where the Trail of 100 Giants is located, as well as Dome Rock. So, it is beneficial for Tulare County to sign this agreement. Even though Tulare County did not sign the agreement, we can still add a page for Tulare County to sign the agreement. So, I apologize that the agreement got signed without presenting it to the board. I was in discussions with your Film Commission regarding trying to get this signed, signature off, and understanding that Tulare County, you guys were dealing with the budget crisis at the time. And so, we had to move forward with signing the agreement, but we can still sign the agreement and include Tulare County into this agreement process. As I said, the agreement expedites the filming that occurs when an entity wants to get a permit from the Forest Service is that we have this agreement that it now should take three to seven, maybe 10 days to get the permit. Any questions?
I'm speaking for the board, and everybody's welcome to speak their mind, but I would certainly think we're interested in participating in this agreement as well. And we have a new Film Commission person, Eric Coyne, in the background. And perhaps before you leave this morning,
I will get with him.
You might have a chance to visit with Eric about, we'll be certain to get this on our agenda and take care of it as soon as possible.
Okay. And the agreement's normally five years. Any entity that signs an agreement with the federal government, you can opt out of the agreement. We put a termination only from the standpoint of a couple of things. One is if something changes, we want to be able to implement something new, as well as agreements do get stale. So, again, I think these agreements are worthwhile, and I will talk to Eric when this is over. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Tina?
I don't have a question, but on the RAC, it seems that the federal government finally realized that the private property owners have a direct interest in fire control and watershed. Conversely, there's a group of supervisors throughout the state of California who share the Sierra Nevadas. And we're looking at trying to include the federal government in the water bond, some portion of the water bond, so we can clean up and maintain the watershed, which is mainly on federal land. So, we are also working to break down those silos.
We appreciate that. We are interested in working with the water districts and getting the more opportunities to use the federal funds, state funds, on private property. Under the Secure Rule Schools, we were still able to use funds on private property under the White Amendment. It was just a lot more processes we had to do. Now, under this particular legislation, it can be easily done. And I already know of a couple of entities dealing with fire safety counters who are eager to get the RAC moving because they want to apply for some of the grants, in particular up near Sequoia Crest. So, it's a good thing.
Very good. Tina, thank you so much for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Don't be a stranger. Come back and visit us more often.
I would do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we're going to take up our public comment period. I have a couple of people who've requested to speak, but they actually are on our agenda items. So, if it's all right, I will, unless they have a particular reason why they want to speak during the public comment period, we'll just wait until that come up, and we will take a couple of items off our consent calendar to deal with that. But otherwise, if you are here this morning and you'd like to speak during the public comment period on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors but not on today's agenda, you're invited to come forward at this time. Seeing and hearing no one, we will close the public comment period and bring up the Board of Supervisor matters. We'll begin with Mr. Ennis on my right.
Yes. Last Friday, I had an opportunity to go up to Granite Hills High School and visit with Evan Hackett. He's the supervising teacher in the Service Learning Grant that we've got going up there and seeing all those kids out there working on computers, and they were so far over my head, I couldn't believe it. I do good to run my BlackBerry, but they were, thanks to Mr. Rousseau. But anyway, it was great to see these kids up there and learning how to put websites up and stuff. And it's part of one of our $5,000 grants that went to the Porterville area. And I think these grants really work. Gets a lot of kids involved, so. Good program. Also, I'll be going to Bakersfield. I do serve on the RAC. And I'll be going to Bakersfield this Thursday evening at 5:00 and hopefully moving forward with getting some grants and grant applications and getting some of that money spent up in our communities. That's all I have.
Last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to drop by and see firefighter Pat Hines. And that day, he had made great progress. He was able to sit on the side of his bed, and they moved him to, got him into a wheelchair. So, he's definitely in a lot of pain, but he looks like his recovery's coming along as slow as it may be. So, I informed him that our thoughts and prayers are with him, and he was very appreciative of the fact that the community has been so giving and outreach toward him. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Pesheta, for being there, also for our, on our behalf. Mr. Cox?
This Sunday, Supervisor Vanderpoel and myself represented the board at the Food Link event, which was held out at the Holiday Inn. Wonderful event. Raised a lot of money for Food Link in the area, which provides a lot of food to needy families, especially children. It was a very good event. Happy to be there and represent the board. Either, neither of us won anything, but we did have a good time. And it was fun watching Supervisor Vanderpoel work with Vintage Press owner David Vartanian to cook his meal. And it looked a little bit better than mine, but I think it was because David was throwing all the ingredients into the pan. We had a lot of fun. It was a nice representation of the board there. Amy Shucklian was the emcee of the event. Went off very well. A lot of money was raised for a very worthy cause in Tulare County.
Thank you for being here on our behalf. Mr. Vanderpoel?
Yeah, I did participate in the event this weekend. I wasn't smart enough to bring a secret ingredient or anything, but I was smart enough to, and I didn't bring an assistant either, but I was smart enough to ask the best chef in the whole room, Dave Vartanian, to help me out. So, that was good on my part, but it was a good cause and raised a lot of money for Food Link, and that was very important. Also, would just like to add on to what Supervisor Ashida said, and let's please continue to ask your colleagues and family and friends to keep Pat Hines, firefighter Pat Hines, and his family and your thoughts and prayers. So, they will definitely continue to need them as he goes on into his recovery. Couple other things. This Thursday is the first graduation of the Mental Health Court in Tulare County. A very exciting program that we have here. And this is actually showing that this program can be a success, and we do have our first graduate graduating this Thursday. So, that will happen at the courthouse, I believe, at 4:00 PM. And very exciting in my district is the Tulare Public Library grand opening, which is happening this Thursday evening. It's been a long time coming, and they've worked really hard on that building. And we're very excited to have that new jewel in the community of Tulare. So, just wanted to make mention of that.
Thank you. I was on a fact-finding mission in San Luis Obispo County last week, and so I have, I'll just leave it at that. Okay, at this time, we'll take up our consent calendar. Item number six will be pulled. We will take no action on that today. We will also take up for separate considerations items number nine and number 12. Are there any other matters which the board wishes to handle separately? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion that we approve the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes. And the votes are unanimous. An approval. Take up item number nine. This is from the County Administrative Office to approve the recommended revisions to Administrative Regulation Number 25 relating to reasonable accommodation. And I'll ask Mr., oh, yes.
Mr. Rousseau asked if I would have my staff speak to this item. And so, I do have Deputy Crystal Sullivan stepping forward as we speak to address this.
Very good. Morning, Sullivan.
Good morning, Board. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Morning.
All right. Briefly, I just wanted to review why you have this administrative regulation in front of you. It's strictly an update. We had outside counsel with McCormick Barstow Firm look at our administrative regulation on accommodation. There have been some statutory changes in the law, and so we felt it was necessary to have it reviewed. We also had Wayleen Luoma from the Human Resources Department. She's a 20-year-plus attorney with Kings County Council. She also took a look at the AR and made comments. Myself and also our risk management team reviewed and made comments. So, with that being said, I'm free to answer any questions you have on the updates.
All right. Are there any questions, members? No? Okay. Thank you very much. You might want to remain close by in case we have some other questions for you. We have Nancy Kilgore has asked to speak to this matter. Good morning. Please, yes.
It might take me a little bit longer because I'm visually impaired, so I'm sorry if it does.
Mrs. Kilgore, could you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Nancy Kilgore. I live at 764 West Nevada Circle, Tulare, California, 93274. I'm a disabled Tulare County worker and have suffered discrimination at the hands of the county. I have a federal lawsuit against Tulare County only because Tulare County was not willing to spend the few dollars needed to allow me to keep my position, which I love. However, Tulare County has enough money to hire an outside attorney and fight me in court. I have tried to mediate a just settlement, but Tulare County would not budge. Tulare County's proposed resolution, subject: Reasonable Accommodation. The proposed resolution regards to the job functions, Page 2D, as including but not limited to, is very vague. Proposed Resolution, Page 2E, refers, number 2, refers to written job description. Even though it's not stated in the resolution, most of Tulare County job descriptions includes the statement "as including but not limited to." The statement "as including but not limited to" is open-ended, leads to confusion, and does not describe essential functions of the job. Moreover, reasonable accommodation may not be considered allowing the disabled worker to suffer discrimination. 3B through E, Tulare County proposes description of undue hardship adds to the EEOC's legal description by segmenting the original documentation into departments and geographical separateness. Adds Tulare County's administration or physical relationship of the facility or facilities. Tulare County version is too diverse and does not protect the disabled person. The Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, or EEOC,'s description of undue hardship defines undue hardship as an action requiring significant difficulty or experience when considered in light of an employer's size, financial resources, and the nature of the structure of its operation. Number 4 addresses disabled employees who will not, who will be required to attend interactive meetings. Having been to more than my fair share of interactive meetings, I want to know just how many meetings with the county council. Two or 200 constitutes harassment on the county's part. In closing, this proposal is not written to help or protect disabled workers. This proposal only serves to legally protect Tulare County's power-driven, upper-echelon- to legally protect Tulare County's power-driven, upper echelon who are blatantly hostile and unwilling to hire or accommodate disabled individuals who choose to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address this on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, we'd be happy to respond to any questions that the board may have.
Yeah. Any questions, board members? Retain a motion?
A motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Sheed. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. That will bring us to item number 12. Is it from the Human Resources Development Department?
Mr. Chair?
She's expecting a response of some kind. Well, the response was simply, we're not going to respond to your lawsuit because we're not.
Oh, no. I, that's, I didn't figure you would.
Right. And there was no question about the.
But number 12, I had something to be good.
Yeah. She's here for the second item as well. Okay. What we'll do is have our presentation by staff.
Okay.
And then we'll give you a chance to come up and give a speech. Thank you. Morning again, Tim.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, you have in front of you a proposal for compensation adjustments, reductions for 2010-11. This is a repetition of the existing package that was adopted last year for your unrepresented management employees of the county. The main characteristics of this include suspending merit and step increases, flexible allocated promotions, suspending the deferred comp match, suspending the sick leave buyback program, continuing the furlough program with a 1.92% salary reduction for the course of the year, and granting a 40-hour furlough time off benefit. Also, one of our management subgroups, battalion chiefs, would, don't take a furlough, but their proposal is to reduce their holiday hours from 96 to 39, essentially replicating the 40-hour furlough for others. At the present time, our staff is engaged in bargaining with nine of our 10 employee organizations. We have concluded a reopener on a two-year contract with the Service Employees International Union. And the final version of the second year of that contract incorporates all of these elements with the exception of the deferred comp match, which they do not have as a benefit. So, so that accounts for approximately 45% of our employees through the Service Employees International Union are sustaining the same reduction continuation from last year. And this will affect approximately 490 middle managers, managers, and department heads. And I'll be happy to respond to any questions.
Are there any questions, comments, board members?
One comment I just was going to make is that this, of course, does not pertain to elected officials because we are protected from sort of thing. But if you recall, last year, board members, each of us voluntarily chose to also take the same 40-hour furlough, 1.9% reduction. I would like to go on record this morning as saying that I would continue to do so this coming year as well, and would invite my colleagues on the board to join me in that regard. Mr. Cox?
And I was naive when I read through this and thought we were just going to continue through from last year when I made the call because of the very last paragraph, it says the state law precludes from doing that. And my question was the same, is, well, I just assumed this include us. And so, I think we'll probably have to sign the same type of statement that we did last year. But I would support the chair and do the same to support the rest employees in the county.
Yeah. And last year, we all participated in the same basic solution to our revenue and our basic deficit that we've been facing here in Tulare County. So, I, too, will be going on record saying that I will participate along with our employees in providing a solution to our budget deficit.
Comments from the colleagues?
Yeah. Again, we're only speaking for ourselves. That does not apply to the other elected officials. There's the sheriff, district attorney, auditor, and tax collector.
Mr. Chairman, the waiver forms are available. All we have to do is change the date. I'm sure the C.A. will take care of that for you.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Just a motion.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we also have somebody who wants to speak to this matter. Okay. Mrs. Kilgore, again, I've.
I have several lines.
All right. Very well. Okay. Any further discussion? Not entertain a motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Vanderpoel, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. And that will take us to our timed item, our 9:30 timed item. And there is a change in this. Mr. Fussell will speak to that matter, but this is a public hearing regarding a request in the Resource Management Agency to consider adjustment of sewer and water rates for specific county service area zones of benefit. And the list is rather extensive, but I believe Mr. Fussell is going to make a proposal this morning which should reduce that list significantly.
Good morning, Board. Brett Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. As indicated, the item before you this morning is the board's consideration of rate adjustments within the county service area zones of benefit. I would like to announce that translation services are available for Spanish-speaking. And if I could have Yolanda Sedonya announce that in Spanish, I'd appreciate it.
Buenos dias nuevamente. Si alguien necesita los audífonos de traducción, que por favor pasen atrás del cuarto, por favor.
Thank you. As the chair indicated, when staff came before you back in May of this year, we set up a public hearing for today's date. That was on May 25th. At that time, we identified in the agenda item of a need for rate adjustments in all of the zones of benefit with the exception of Seville Sewer. Those notices were mailed on May 26th. In addition, we published the notice of today's hearing in The Valley Voice on May 27th. Since that time, we've had an opportunity to take a look at the financial records. We also, by the, by working at this particular juncture in time, we have final, pretty substantially final financial information into the system. And as a result of taking a look at that information, this morning, I'm going to present information that would suggest to the board, if they would like, that they could not do a rate adjustment in all of the zones of benefit with the exception of Tuleville and Traver. And I'll talk about those in a moment. As you're aware, the county operates 11 small sewer and water systems. They're identified up on the, on the screen. In addition to these 11 within the county service area, the county also operates the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District. And that one has been functioning quite well with its existing rate adjustment, existing rates. And we haven't had to adjust rates in that area for as long as, at least for as long as I've been here. And there's just a quick map with the location of the various systems. This graphic right here is a presentation of how we ended last fiscal year. The important column to take a look at is what's called the net cost column. And if you see a number that's negative or in brackets, that means that the staff this year was able to manage that zone of benefit by, you know, not expending any money unnecessarily for improvements or repairs. Then we actually ended up with a cost savings. In other words, if you take a look at the estimated expenses and you compare it to the estimated revenue, and we don't consider depreciation, which is included within this expense number, to be a cash and actual expense, we end up with, in the case of El Rancho, we actually ended up with a savings or to the good, if you will, of $6,642. If you drop down to the third line from the bottom, it identifies what we believe the estimated actual need from the revolving loan fund for fiscal year 2009, 2010 of something less than $16,000. You can see that's because we've been able to, again, manage these, try to keep expenses to a minimum, not make repairs if we can avoid making those repairs, and keep costs down. The number that's below that of 132,000 is the number that I had presented to the board last year as to what I thought would be the revolving loan fund need at the end of the public hearing process, where we actually ended up raising rates in most of the zones with the exception of Tuleville, where there was a protest that was filed and found to be valid. This graphic right here shows the proposed expenses and the estimated revenue, again, less depreciation, for fiscal year 2010, 2011 with no rate adjustment. It's the last slide that I want to talk briefly about with the board that supports my idea that we might be able to get through next year without a rate increase in all of the zones of benefit with the exception of Tuleville and Traver. In the yellow ones, you notice that in the net cost for 2010, sorry, that should be 2011, because that's a proposed number, we're coming up in the yellow lines where we're actually ending up with a net savings in that. In other words, the, the, if you take the estimated expenses and you take out the estimated revenue and you take out the depreciation, we would come up in the case of the Delph Colony Zone of Benefit Sewer of being $6,793 to the good. That's our, that's our projection. So, that, that's basically the yellow ones. In the case, I apologize. Actually, the net cost for 2011 is this column right here, identified net cost. This is last year's numbers for comparison purposes. In the case of the light blue lines, you'll see that in the previous year, we had, we actually came in with a savings. As in Zappone, El Rancho, if you use the estimated expenses, the estimated revenues for 2011, you would see a net cost of hit to the general fund loan of $6,300. Again, what I would like to do in these is allow us to continue to manage these zones and in a manner to avoid making unnecessary expenses. Still would propose that we would keep some of those line items in the budget in case we need them. One of them, which would be like ready router services if we need to clean the lines. Or if we need to make some minor repairs, we've got some money set aside for our vendor to do that. But we would, we would take every effort not to spend that money. The other thing that we do in looking at these budgets is we take a look at what our vendor is telling us that we might want to be looking at as major capital expenses, such as a replacement of a pump. And we're looking at it, we assess it with our own staff and say, you know, no, let's see if we can make it one more year without making that expense so that we don't have to incur it this year. The, the only difference in that analysis is in the Yetum Zone of Benefit. And in this particular, this is in the water system, in this particular case, last year, we had a net cost of $9,800. We're proposing a net cost of $6,732. We would like to work, continue to work at managing this system to try to get this down to a smaller number without the need for a rate increase. In addition, there, in some of these, there may actually be fund balance that can help offset some of these extra costs. In the case of Tuleville, which is not highlighted at all, we're showing a net cost of proposed for 2011 budget year of almost $20,000. We had a net cost in 2010 of $4,465. This is one where last year, we did not do the rate increase. If we had the rate increase, we might be in a position where we might be able to make this one work. So, I would propose that we do the 10% rate increase in Tuleville. Then lastly is Traver. Traver was actually on my list of one that we would not propose, or I would not suggest a rate increase on because of how we ended up last year and looking at the 54, 59 and trying to manage that. But I got a call from our operator yesterday that said, you've got a pump out there that appears to be giving you problems. And we did identify in, when we went through the budgeting process of a pump replacement to the tune of about $14,000. Again, I set it aside and said, let's not do it this year, and let's see if we can, can make this thing work. But it appears that maybe that's not going to be the case. I won't know the final answer to that question until we do some more assessments, which is what the vendor is currently doing. So, with that knowledge of a, of a potential pump failure that could be expensive on the order of $13,000 to $15,000, I'm suggesting we go ahead and do the 10% rate increase in the Traver Zone of Benefit, which would raise that from 27, 25 to, to $30.
I have a question to counsel. Is it, do we have within our authority to, after we've gone through this whole process, and if we were to raise the 10%, if, if then thereafter, there was a determination made that there was not a need to replace this pump, would we be able to just go back and suspend that increase? Because if that's, if that's the causation of the, of the increase, would we have the authority to do that?
You would, you would have to go through this process to change the fee. Obviously, you have the ability not to spend the money. Prop 218 does require, or does, does contain a, call it a rebate provision. And there's a hearing process for that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the next slide is the Table A, which would be the attachment to the resolution. If the, if the decision was to proceed based upon the information I presented this morning, you see in this Table A is only showing an adjustment in, excuse me, Tuleville and in the community of Traver. With that, I respond to any questions. And then I would ask the board to open the public hearing, take testimony. Their Proposition 218 does provide for a protest provision. It has to be a written protest. And in the case of sewer, water, rates, et cetera, it has to be a majority protest of those that receive the service. So, in other words, if you take a look at the Table 1, there's a list of all of the connections within the various zones of benefit. The board would need to receive a written protest of a, of a half plus one in order for that to override your action this morning in adjusting the rates upwards. What we would ask this morning is that if we do receive written protest, that you, at the end of that, close the, the public hearing so that it would be no more testimony and no more submission of protest, but keep the meeting open and allow, go into either recess or move on to another item to have us an opportunity to go and take a look at and do a cursory review and count of the written protests to see if, number one, there's more than a majority being submitted. If not, then obviously, they wouldn't comply with the law, and the board could take action. If there is more than a majority submitted, then we would like that particular one to be pulled back. We would want to go back and review each protest letter to make sure that it's valid, and then come back at a subsequent meeting, probably on August 10th, with the count of that.
And the way that would work, Mr. Chairman, is your board will close the public hearing at the conclusion of receipt of protests, assuming there are any, and then continue the matter to a date certain for further action.
All right. Are there any questions, Mr. Vanderpoel?
You know, I, I, first of all, I just applaud staff because we're looking for ways to keep these costs down in the vast majority of the districts that we provide services to by foregoing repairs and things. But that begs the question that when we do forego these repairs, are we still able to provide adequate service to the constituents or the people that are receiving these services, whether it's sewer or water?
As, as long as the sewage is still being collected and is being distributed to the facilities for treatment, which some, we have the facility for treatment, some we purchase treatment from like City of Lindsay, Cutler-Rosi Joint White Wastewater, et cetera, or City of Woodlake, then we're good to go. When we find ourselves in a situation where something breaks down and we have a sewage spill, then the county has a problem. If you noticed on your agenda this morning, you also took action adopting sanitary sewer management plans for each of the ones for which we provide sewer, which is a requirement of the Regional Water, Regional Water Quality Control Board and our permits. Basically, those state that they don't want to see a discharge of sewage. They especially don't want to see discharge of sewage that might make it into a water course. And over the five years, four years that I've been involved in this, I think we've had three discharges where, you know, something was plugged, something happened, and we ended up with two of those being minor small reporting. One of them at Terabella was a little bit larger, required a little more reporting. None of them fortunately made it into water channels. So, yes, we're, as staff, you know, obviously, we're concerned about deferred maintenance, but we're also concerned about, about budget. And unfortunately, you know, because of the rates that we haven't been able to account for depreciation and move it into a sinking fund in order to be able to have money in some of these, some of these we do, some of these we don't to make those capital improvements. Hopefully, that answers your questions.
Mr. Sheed?
Brett, when we contract with another agency for sewer services, are these increases as a result of the contract fee going up from the service provider?
Yes, in some regards it is. We receive service from the Cutler-Rosi Joint Powers Wastewater Authority. When they adjust their rates, they adjust their rates for us. The same with the City of Lindsay and the City of Woodlake. And that's. And that's, I believe we have an agreement with them for that to happen.
Next question I have, in a perfect world, if everybody paid their sewer rate, we would still be behind $35,000.
Yes. I mean, that, and last week you took an action regarding placing the delinquent rates on the tax roll. The county, in my opinion, is always assured of getting paid because you have the ability of rolling the delinquencies onto the tax roll. It may delay the payment as that cycles through the process, and then there's always the risk that you may have a property that they just stopped making their property tax payments. That will go out for five years before it goes to tax sale. So, but yes, the, the short answer to your question is, is even the rate structure that we have, even collecting all the money, we would still be coming up short in some of these from being able to cost. And, and set aside money for these little replacements. These systems are starting to age. Some of them are in excess of 20 years old.
Do you have a question? Mr. Cox?
That's a good point that I wasn't aware of, that some of these increases are caused by some of the cities or the other sewer districts that are providing the service. So we, we have one number in our report here and here. What number is the proposed add-on to the revolving fund that the door only spins one way?
For, for the end of last fiscal year?
Well, for this year. What's the proposed for this year? Because I see the 34, 8, but there was other numbers in here. Is it, is that the one that's cut in half to 15?
The number I would probably use right now would be on Table 3, if I could have my slide back.
So the 59,000?
I would use, yes, I would use this number right now. That's assuming that this holds true. Again, what I'm suggesting that we'd be allowed to do is like we were able to do last year is to manage these to keep these numbers down. But I, this, these are the budgeted numbers that I've put in for your consideration on the budget because again, it gives me the line item and the money available if something should come, come up, I need to do that, absolutely have to make the decision to do it in order to keep from having a sewage spill.
All right. No, I really, it looks like we're walking on a razor's edge with these budgets anyways. You spin a bearing and boom, there goes your budget.
Yep.
Thanks.
One comment I would like to make, and it has been on this board for, this is probably my 12th hearing. I believe we have raised the rates every year that you've come before us, and this is the first time I think we've actually had you come before us and not request a rate increase. And so first, kudos, kudos to your, your office for being able to keep those costs down this coming year. And also just to acknowledge that, you know, the justification, if in a perfect world, we'd probably want to continue to increase rates because of such things as deferred maintenance and, and unexpected expenses and so forth. But these are some of the poorest people in Tulare County paying some of the highest rates in California, probably for some of these services being delivered. And so at this point in time in our economy and the situation as it is at hand, I think this is very good news in a very troubled time, and I want to thank you for being able to bring this to us. It's a, it's a light of, of a ray of hope in a, in a sometimes otherwise dismal sort of a financial situation. So, thank you. Any, any other questions by the board members for the general, for the public hearing? If not, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to address this on this matter, please come forward at this time. Don't be shy. As you come forward, would you please give us your name and your address, please? Yes. And pull that microphone down, close to your mouth, please.
Good morning. My name is Eunice Martinez, 2377 East Alfred Avenue, Tulleville, California. I'm here representing Tulleville. I'm here representing Tulleville, and we have here Proposition Vote 218 protest. I'd like to turn them in. And we just want to let you know that last year, a comment was made after the Prop 218 was turned in, that things were, things with the county were, in order to have, excuse me, I'm nervous. Things were said last year that the Prop 218 vote for no, excuse me, I'm real nervous. That with the county, things were going to be different, or some, some programs were going to be questioned because of the rate increase wasn't done for Exeter or for Tulleville. All I can say is that I know after we got word that the Prop 218 was, was valid for Tulleville, all I know is that for two or three months on end, the, I don't know for sure if it was done purposely or what, but the fact is that for two, three months, we had bad odors coming from the, from the sewage system that's not too far from where we live. And so I again ask you that if, if, if it's valid this year, please just don't do things purposely because some of the folks did get sick just from the rumors. And, and just to let you know, we have ideas and plans on, on how to help the county out more to make it sustainable for us, but they haven't come to us, and I guess we've got to do our part more to come to you. But we have ideas. So if you can take the time and contact us, you have my address, we have a committee, we can, you know, talk and, and give your, give our ideas that we have for our community. And I'd just like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can you give those to our clerk? She has them, okay. Yes, sir.
My name is Merle Bailey. I live at 2495 Alfred Avenue in Tulleville. I, I appreciate the, the board's dilemma with the budget and that, but like the supervisor said, the economy is bad. A lot of the people that live in our community are farm laborers, and they, they're, they're facing a, a tremendous drop in, in work and, and being able to support their families. And the county, I understand, like I said, I understand your dilemma, but we're under the same dilemma. We have, we're, we're living under the, the poverty lines of the federal government or probably anyone else. And I, I just want you to know that, you know, we're working, we're trying, and even though we're poor, we're taxpayers too, because one of the supervisors said last year that you're responsible for the county's tax money, and even though we're poor, we still pay taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Susan Adeanda, co-director with Community Water Center here in Visalia. I am here to, once again, as last year, express my concern. I think the county has gotten into a bad habit of not really sitting down and looking at the numbers. I'm curious, why is it that we've decided not to increase the rates for all of the communities? It's my understanding that we met with Brett earlier last week, and we actually looked at the numbers and decided that maybe we didn't have to increase rates for all the communities. I just wonder, who is looking out for the most poorest communities in the county? I think it's your responsibility to really look at it, and it's time to really think about sustainability and time to really think about how we can really help these communities have affordable rates. They are the poorest. Yes, they have aging infrastructure, and the future tells us that we're going to have to replace pipes and whatnot, but we cannot continue to increase rates. It's unaffordable and it's not sustainable. And I think the, the county merits time to really sit down and look at all these numbers and think of ways to reduce costs, maybe contracting with a different provider, but really having the time to think about it before next year, because I would hate to see this again next year, increasing the rates with the most poorest communities in the county is just not fair. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address this? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Mark Estrada, and I'm a resident in Yetum, 14366 Avenue 384. And we have recently had a problem with our sewer system where there's cockroaches coming up out of our drains. And I brought this up to Resource Management, and I was told that it's a plumbing problem and that I need to have a plumber come and look at, at our system, which, you know, never had any problem with this before. One of the representative water dynamics came out, and we popped one of the covers on the sewer system, and I looked down there and it was just completely full of cockroaches. I don't know why all of a sudden they have decided to start coming out, but I mean, I wake up in the middle of the night and I'll, I'll see cockroaches in the sink. And I just wanted to make the board aware of that because I kind of felt like I was getting pushed aside by Resource Management with my claim and telling me that it was my problem. But anyway, that's, that's all.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Then I will close the public hearing as to all except as to Tulleville, give our staff an opportunity to review preliminarily the protest, and we'll come back and revisit this matter during the course of our meeting today.
As the public hearing does need to be closed, and then your board would take action so that, don't adjourn and, or, we don't want any more protests being filed.
That was the, my, what I indicated was that we would take action, we would close the public comment period as to all except as to, all right, you're saying we close the public comment period as to all of them? All right, very good. But we will not take action on the Tulleville matter this time? All right.
The other thing I would like to announce, Sheriff, I made that I was handed by the gentleman that just spoke regarding Yetum protest letters for Yetum. If you were considering a rate adjustment, we would need to consider these. If you're not considering a rate adjustment in Yetum, then we would not need to like, take a look at these. We do need to take a look at Tulleville, and we'll, what we'll do is we'll do a quick initial count to see if we have where the count is relative to the number of accounts and then report back to you on the status of that.
Yetum protest letter should be given to the clerk for the record.
At this time, entertain a motion on the balance of the rate adjustment request.
You know, it's, it's always a hard thing to increase rates on anything, but especially when you're dealing with some of the poorest people in the county. And I know that the Water Commission has been looking for different ways that they can help these disadvantaged communities, and we're always looking to upgrade the connections and improve the services and also ultimately decrease costs, but we also need to look for ways that we can decrease costs through economies of scale, and I'll just put that out there as something we need to think about, but.
But as to this motion, we're only, the request is only to increase the rates as to Traver.
And, and it is nice that we do not have to increase rates for the, the balance of the different communities, but although difficult, we have to do this because we have to look out for the general fund for the whole county. So I will make that motion.
So, Sheriff, I may before the board votes, then you're going to take action on everything except Tulleville?
Correct.
But we would then bring Tulleville back at a future meeting, or are we able to?
Well, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to continue that matter even for the course of the rest of our meeting until you determine whether or not there's a potential valid vote. All right, there's a motion by Mr. Vanderpoel. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Votes are four to one in favor of the, the motion. So that will conclude the matter for thou, and then we'll give you an opportunity to review the, the balance. Yes, a comment? Yes, certainly.
I'd like to comment regarding a few comments that were made during the public hearing. If you're not familiar or aware, the county's been participating and has established a disadvantaged communities committee. That's a subcommittee of the Water Commission. Part of that group includes the Community Water Center. And what we are trying to do is identify every system we have in the county, identify the systems that can be connected to cities and can be improved upon. In regard to that effort, we, we received a $2 million earmark from the state, and it's our understanding that $1 million of the $2 million is going to be coming down the chute pretty soon. So if you, if folks from these communities have, want to have input into that process and have ideas, we strongly recommend that you participate in that committee. Again, the challenges in Tulare County are significant, both at the water, for our water and sewer systems. It's important that we work together, and I applaud the comments from the gal in the back who said that, you know, you have ideas and you, including ideas for sustainability, because sustainability is critical in solving some of these, these issues. But to let you folks know and the group as a whole know, this board is working diligently at both the state and federal level to lobby for monies for both the research and development to improve these systems. We were successful at the state level, and we're still working hard, long and hard at the federal level, because the feds have a lot of money. There are, there are matches involved that quite frankly, make it difficult to go forward with some of these projects. But please, if you want to have input into your systems and potentially how to improve them, participate in that process, because we need as many positive and, and good ideas as, as we can get.
Chairman. Yes, Mr. Hued.
As Chairman of the Water Commission, I, I'm a little disturbed about the issue of sustainability. Now, if we're, if we are hooking some of these communities up to other systems and we keep seeing escalation of the charges, and I would like to look at the comparability of what the people are being charged that, let's say, a city is charging their residents versus what they're charging our client, our people in the unincorporated areas. Because if, by looking at this, it, it may not help that much to hook up to a larger system if they keep raising the rates above what, I want to see if there's a disparity between the rates of the provider versus the people who are, or outside of the service We have, we have lobbied on the Water Commission as Mr. Rousseau has stated, and we finally may be looking at some funds, but it all comes back to sustainability. And I think we're going to have some major issues with sustainability even in the, in these small communities. So please participate with us in the Water Commission and with community water people, because they, one of the members sits on the board, and self-help, we work very close with self-help. And as you know, in Tulleville, we're still working on that new water system, but we're getting there. And we did, iron went out in Plainview in the last two years, so we are making progress. And we would not make the progress without the community, without the community's efforts and without self-help in the USDA. So we're all working together to improve our water and sewer issues in disadvantaged communities.
I, I guess I would remiss without making one final comment, and that is that the general plan by its very design is, is also dealing with this issue from a sustainability standpoint, I think that's what Mr. Vanderpoel referring to, is that in the past where we have basically zoned these communities into absolutely zero or potentially no growth, it has really fixed the numbers of participants in these programs. And one of the solutions is to look at where we have excess capacity or creating that capacity to have more people paying into the system to reduce the overall cost on a per capita basis. So I believe that also is a long, but that's obviously a long-term type of thing. It doesn't happen overnight. It takes time for those things to occur, but it is, begin, it is important to begin that process. Did you want to say anything?
Chairman Worthley, at your direction, if the board would like, I can come back and bring a more comprehensive presentation on the zones of benefit. I've actually been able to accumulate some historical data on rate structures, rate setting that has happened, some information relative to how they were formed, agreements with the various either JPAs or cities as far as drainage. And if the board would like, I'd be happy to come back in a month, six weeks or so, late August, early September and make that presentation.
Very good.
And then secondly, while Mr. Rousseau was speaking, I did have an opportunity to quickly count these. There are probably 50 or 51 protest letters submitted in Tulleville, and a quick count of the accounts would indicate that there's 82. So there is as far as a number of protest letters that would meet the majority threshold. So what I would ask is that, give us an opportunity to take a look at these and make sure that they're all valid, they're not, and I'm not counting duplicates, and that they're all, you know, legitimate protest letters, and then report back to you on August 10th regarding Tulleville.
So we should continue this matter to the 20, to the August 10th date?
The Tulleville portion of it.
Yes.
The rest of it, based upon your action, those rates would become effective on August, the rate that changed in Traver would become effective on August 1st. None of the other rates would change, and I will get the clerk of the board to revise resolution and attachment.
Right. I entertain a motion to continue.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Cox.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hued. Please cast your votes. Vote unanimous.
Thank you, Board.
Fussell, I have one more request.
Yes, sir.
When you come back with a review of these different systems, could you include how much the regulatory costs, the reporting costs to the state of California?
Yes.
These, and a lot of these public utility districts and community service districts, the audit costs are so high, that up, ups the water cost of, and sewer cost of these communities. And I think we need to get a handle on how much this regulatory cost is to our systems.
Good.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
That concludes our public hearings for the day, so we will move then to our untimed item, item number 21 is a request from the Fire Department to review alternatives for hazardous materials emergency responder services. Morning, Chief Sunderland.
Good morning, again. Good morning, Board. Steve Sunderland, Tulare County Fire Chief, 907 West Visalia Road, Farmersville. Bear with me for just a moment. My presentation this morning, I'm looking for a direction. Hopefully we can demystify some of the hazmat discussion that's, that's been taking place over the last six to eight months. Last Thursday, just to bring you up to date, we had a Fire Chiefs meeting, if you will, at our headquarters in Farmersville. Supervisor Cox, thank you for your attendance, we appreciate your presence. All the departments save the wildland agencies were represented but for Woodlake Fire District and the Tulley River Fire on the reservation. I laid out to the Fire Chiefs in the room what my presentation was about today and overwhelmingly they, they supported the notion of some of the concepts that, that I'm going to present today. Just a brief history, in 1995, the county of Tulare and the city of Visalia entered into an agreement that identified the level of hazmat response service. There was no annual fee attached for the service. It identified the fire departments in the county as the agreements with other entities are pretty much boilerplate, as the billing entity. We do get billed, we do pay our bills when we receive them from the city of Visalia. It also includes a 30-day termination notice to be provided in writing. In 2002, the local Department of Homeland Security Approval Authority and grant processes were established from the onset in Tulare County. Response disciplines and service commitments were coordinated by virtue of local law enforcement, fire service and existing EMS leadership at the time. Having come from Fresno County sometime after that, I had a full appreciation for what was going on in Tulare County. They were light years ahead in the delivery of services than, than was Fresno. Visalia Fire Department leadership agreed to provide hazmat response team services. Dinuba and Tulare provide confined space response team services and County Fire provides a decon unit with technicians and breathable air refill, the, the, the self-contained breathing apparatus, on-scene refillable. We can refill the tanks on the, on the emergency scene. Grant purchased equipment, since the inception of the Approval Authority, funding has been awarded relative to the value of the grant funding that year and consideration given to the operational area needs. There are good years and there are bad years relative to fire department requests. This was a bad year for Tulare County, we did not get our request, we understand why, we stepped back away from the table and we encourage those who did get their request and wish them the best. And we come back to the table next year. Any agencies, I might add that any agency's failure to provide operational area response may cause homeland security grant purchased equipment to be forfeited to the state of California for the Department of Homeland Security's reutilization. That's state policy, it's not necessarily local policy, but on the committee and at OES, we believe that to be true. Alright. Do I have to use the little handheld to advance the slide?
Okay, push escape.
Which one am I going to use?
Either one, your choice.
Okay, thanks. Activity throughout the county, in the county area or in those agencies or municipalities outside the city of Visalia averages about 1.3 calls per year for hazmat response. County Fire has had three call-outs events in the last three years since the Fire Department has been operational. There have been several other events which were mitigated through our own internal means relative to our own capabilities and training level. Considerations for service. The first one would be to negotiate a new agreement with the city of Visalia and budget and plan for the proposed annual fee of nearly $39,000. That's just for the first year and that value assumes that all the cities will participate. Second option, staff and fund, County Fire Department hazmat response team to provide service to the countywide operational area. I would suggest that that's at least a minimum of a million dollar startup to equip, train staff and pay for the circumstance of a county hazmat team, County Fire Department. Another option would be to contract with other government agencies other than the city of Visalia for service. The fourth is to engage a private industry responder to provide the services. And last but not least, working with all the agencies involved, develop a rainbow, if you will, or operational area team approach to staffing the hazmat response team with multiple agencies training and assigning staff to a countywide response team. Are added costs avoidable? Yes, but only under one of the considerations and that's the private industry service provider. There's no proposed annual fee, the cost of the team activation is avoidable and results in a reduction of anticipated incident expense. And also avoidable is the expense of developing the County Fire Department response team. Are there other options, options absent increased cost of the county? All the options but for the private industry provider have an expense associated with them. What service level impacts are associated with the options? Should, should the board elect to stay with the existing service model, there's no foreseeable change in the service. Should the board elect to engage a private industry provider, the service level appears to increase by the cleanup service that's being made available by the industry responder. They would come for the cleanup regardless of what entity or agency provides the initial response. If they provide the initial response, then they're already on scene and the cleanup goes on just as if it were, were part of the incident. My first recommendation to the board is that we work with current service provider and the other impacted agencies to develop an operational area hazmat team. Now this would require continuing temporary funding until January 1st, 2011. And while this recommendation does not eliminate cost, it does provide a manageable alternative to the model which increases the cost of maintaining a local hazmat response team. It also provides a moderate degree of expenditure relief to the city of Visalia. Doesn't eliminate all of it, but perhaps a more manageable situation for, for the city Fire Department. Although I would recommend as well, if we cannot come to a satisfactory conclusion by January 1st, that we would default to the, the second recommendation. And the second recommendation is to consider engaging a private industry provider simply for the enhanced service that they bring to the table. It appears at this time that there are no annual fees and it seems to bring reduced cost relative elimination of team call-out or response cost when an actionable incident occurs. I've got to back up and talk a little bit about recommendation number one. On Thursday, during our meeting, there was overwhelming support for this concept. Since Thursday, on Friday and Saturday, I've received correspondence from two of the major departments in the county that have expressed significant reluctance to participate relative to what the additional cost may bring to their independent agencies and the time involved to train folks and, and circumstance of that nature. That would put a little different spin on this recommendation and would in all likelihood cause the county to be the sole provider of additional technicians and specialists in the hazmat arena. We do have four people that are already trained. One is a battalion chief, three others are captains and I would suggest that we train at least three more so that we could have two on each shift to respond with the hazmat team. I did make a suggestion at the meeting with the Visalia staff that was present, that perhaps consideration internally to Visalia be given to adjust their fee schedule. I think they're still working off the 1995 fee rates. What could be included in that is all those costs that support the team, the training, the, the medical evaluations, the calibration of equipment, the testing of equipment, depreciation of equipment, the need for, when, when things timeout or expire, the replacement of commodities and equipment that has to take place, that can all be calculated into a fee rate and I'm going to look at council and I believe that would all be considered billable in the rate.
Administration is considered part of the program, a hearing would have to be held, there are various things.
So we would have a way to recoup our expense when we identify a spill or a leak generator. By merely adding a $40,000 fee for service, call it a retainer, if you will, I don't believe that we can parcel that out to the incident responsible parties and collect that. Now, a new rate schedule, that doesn't get Visalia $189,000 or whatever the case may be that, that's been identified for supporting that team. But it does allow us to perhaps call on more incidents where we can come closer to making that contribution of that $40,000, but it would be directly proportionate to the number of calls that, that we have in the county area. So, as an example, of a private industry provider, Park Environmental happens to be a company in Fresno, they've been in business for 15 years, they respond to the, the, the whole gamut of, of hazardous materials, leaks and spills, here are some, mercury spills, overturned tankers, clandestine drug labs and so on and so forth. A brief history of the firm, again, 1985 is when they were formed, they have a Fresno address, this is their licensing, they're licensed for, as an engineering contractor, building contractor, all, you see the, the whole gamut here of circumstances that they have certification and licensing to, to perform their element of business in. Deliverables, they're, I got this off of their website, they're recognized for their capability to provide quality service to their customers, they're a full-service corporation, they're a leader in the performance of hazardous materials waste cleanup. That concludes my presentation. Ready for discussion?
Truans?
Yes.
Looking at this rainbow concept, now that would have to be everybody on board to make that work?
In the purest sense, yes. In the, in the strictest sense, no. It could be considered a rainbow team with just the two agencies participating. It's my vision and how that would work is that the county would, would substitute, if you will, for, for two or three of the seven folks that respond with the Visalia unit. Now the Visalia Fire Department and the city of Visalia may have a different opinion in that, I, I don't know. But that would be a way for Visalia to reduce expenditure, we would be able to contribute to the solution and the service would be, would be what it is. It takes, it takes, in the, in the fire department world, there's seven people that basically as a minimum have to respond in a hazmat response because of the structure that we use in our industry. In the private world, it's different, they have a different standard of safety, they, they go strictly by what OSHA drives them to. And in most cases, they, they would bring out four people initially and maybe, maybe even just maintain their, their whole response at four. If it's a very large scale circumstance, then certainly it would grow from four.
What is the, what is the cost? Would it be a, a high startup cost and then go down over time?
Not, not in a rainbow fashion, inasmuch that the grant-funded equipment is already in resident, in residence at Station 55 in the Visalia Fire Department, we would bring to the table trained specialists to participate in a, in a rainbow or a collaborative effort.
Mr. Vanderpoel?
I've got a couple of questions, Chief. First of all, what is the participation looking like in terms of entering into the contractual agreement and paying a fee with the city of Visalia? What have the other cities done?
I don't have a really solid feel for what the other cities have done, I get the sense though that they're waiting for this board to make some announcement and, and go from there.
Okay, and also the last, how many calls have we averaged on the hazmat team per year?
One, we've been in service in 2007.
Okay, and then I was curious, so with this $40,000 fee that is proposed, would that be it? We wouldn't be charged per call? It would just be-
No, the, the, we would continue to be billed as we are today for the incident response.
So it would be the 40,000 plus a response fee as well?
Yes, if you could consider the 39.5 or 40,000 a retainer-
Mm-hmm.
-and, and after the retainer comes the billable hours.
Okay, well, wait, wait, one second, go ahead. In a retainer situation, you actually apply those against the retainer, so you're saying that that's not the same?
It's not been shared.
That's not a retainer, it's, it's basically, you, you make an annual payment and then we're going to charge you for every, every episode as well on top of that.
Yes, that's the way I understand it.
Okay, and then I was curious, who did this, who bought this equipment? Did the city of Visalia buy all this equipment for the hazmat team?
It's, the Visalia Fire Department has participated in the Homeland Security grant process for the last eight years. There's been nearly $400,000 spent in the interest of the, the Visalia Fire Department, perhaps not all of it in the hazmat arena, but much of it went to hazmat equipment.
Okay, and, and I've been doing a little bit of research of my own, speaking with various fire chiefs and things. Has the Visalia hazmat team achieved any form of typing? Are they a-
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
And, and their last grant request, as I under, I was not at the, the Approval Authority meeting, but as I understand the minutes in the discussion, that their request was to acquire the necessary equipment to take them to the type one level, which would make them a regional resource to the Cal-EMA folks.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
I had a question, Chief, in your initial slide, there was responsibilities that were also borne specifically by County Fire and I believe the city of Tulare?
Yes, can I back that up? Do I do that or do you do that, Michelle? The city of Dinuba and Tulare in 2002 agreed and, and the Approval Authority had the understanding that they would provide confined space response services. The Visalia Fire Department leadership agreed to the hazmat response team services and the county agreed to the decon service that's associated with hazmat response and the breathable air refilling, mobile refilling service.
My question is, do any of those entities charge in the same way that Visalia is proposing to charge the other agencies for providing those services?
Not so far.
Do they charge on a, on an incident basis for recovery of costs?
Yes. If there's, if there's a circumstance of negligence or a violation of law, the costs are recoverable.
Have we calculated from our perspective what, if we were to do- Have we calculated from our perspective what if we were to do something similar to what Visalia apparently has done and coming up with their particular number, have we calculated what that cost would be for us to charge back out to other agencies?
I do have an hourly rate calculated for our decon response in three different levels of response, but I don't have it off the tip of my tongue. I've got a spreadsheet built that determine that.
Mr. Cox?
If I can, just, I'll inject a couple of minutes of the hell I've gone through the last couple of months. And that's a joke, you can smile, Chief. I attended a subcommittee meeting with the various fire chiefs that were tasked with trying to make this work, fix this. I attended a City Visalia Council meeting with Gene Russo, where we kind of held out all of said we'd like to sit down and do this. Ray Bullock was also there, we had OES representation on the committee, you know, we talked about, okay, what are the real issues? And I'm not going to say, I don't want to hurt anyone's feelings, but it became real obvious to me that there was a lot of tension about this issue, that some of the cities, and it's been said today, some of the other cities are sitting on the sidelines waiting to see what we're going to do before they so say make their move. And I'm concerned that the electeds in this case, and I think were the first ones to hear this, have not been making the decisions, that it's been, you know, the fire chiefs, and early on, the fire chiefs might have had a little contention amongst themselves because this was, you know, an old system that was, you know, Visalia came forward saying, we've got a budget hole, we've got to fill this budget hole, here's one of our gaps where we need to fill it in with some money. And so this is how this came apart, when these chiefs came together, and again, this is my perception as an outsider, purely an outsider, I've been to a few meetings where the chiefs just could not make this work, I think there was some, there's a need for clear direction from the electeds, their bosses, to say, this is how we'd like you to proceed. And I really think that's where we are today, to where the chiefs, you know, having their various responsibilities, their duties, representing us, representing the public, the people they do, just couldn't work this out without some clear direction from above, and I think it's a good opportunity for us to tell these guys, okay, you've got to work out these differences, this is the direction we'd like you to move, and I think you're asking for a clear direction today, which way do you want me to move? And I think, Chief, you're willing to go whichever direction we tell you to go, is that correct? So I think it's an opportunity for us as a board to try to maybe unify these, this program again. I'm very supportive of having a local versus a outside contractor, a private contractor come in. We have spent probably literally millions of dollars on the equipment, on the people, on the training, not only with the city, but with the other cities, Porterville, Tulare, the county, all have hazmat-trained people, so there's literally been millions of dollars spent in our county on getting ready for these hazmat-type incidences. And I think it would be a shame to kind of toss that all out because we might have some personality conflicts right now. So I think, you know, in my opinion, we need to hear, I know there's folks from the City of Visalia today that would like to talk, I'd like to listen to what they have to say. I think we need, as electeds, need to give our staff direction to find some middle ground because so far, there's been no way to find middle ground. Everybody has their own side and their own weapons, and the lines have been drawn, I think we need to give direction to drop those lines and work things out. So I mean, for me, very difficult process, I thought we were just talking about a few things, like we're in our general plan, well, we're close, but we have a few eyes to dot and teeth to cross, well, that was not the case. The sides were very far apart from each other, a lot of tension, and it's just not between Chief Sunderland and Mark here, it's just not the tension here, there's a lot of tension among all the chiefs because of this issue, maybe there's others, I'm just aware of this one. So I think we need to give clear direction today as to what direction these guys ought to go. My personal feeling is we need to do what we can do to use the dollars that we've spent here already wisely and try to work this thing out.
Mr. Rashida?
Listening to the comments today, I believe this whole hazmat issue needs to be put into a program that we have not done on a comprehensive basis. As Supervisor Worthley brought up, there are other parts to the hazmat response besides that engine that comes out of Visalia. So we all have, many of our different fire districts do have a vested interest in providing services for a hazmat spill that, or incident that we're not being compensated for either. So we looked at our budget and said that, hey, we have this decontamination unit, and it costs us X number of dollars to keep it in place, well, there should be, if one part of the equation gets compensated, the whole equation should be compensated. So I think we need to look at that. And I agree with Supervisor Cox, I'm willing to go till the first of the year to iron this issue out on an existing local program that we do have, but there's one thing I'm not willing to do, I'm not willing to pay for incentive pay for hazmat team on that engine, because our people do not get incentive pay for their training in hazmat. I think that cost is something we could do without, and I certainly support having a local response at this point in time, but these issues need to be ironed out by the first of the year.
Penpal?
And I do agree with that, I think that by, you know, if we enter into this $40,000 fee, I think what we're looking at is we're opening up a can of worms. I mean, Dinuba's going to want to be compensated for their expertise, Tulare's going to want to be compensated for their expertise, the county of Tulare's going to want to be compensated for their expertise, and I just don't want to see us walk down that line where it creates a budget problem for all parties involved. But at the end of the day, what we need to be most concerned about is what is going to be the best for our response area, the people here in Tulare County, whom we all serve along with the city. So what is going to be best for the local people? I think it is going to be a local team, and I just think like Supervisor Rashida, that we just have to iron out these details. And I'm inclined to agree with you, Chief, and say that we need to look at some sort of a modification to the rate structure that's charged per response by the various entities so that they can recoup the costs of the training, the expertise, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kind of where I am coming from.
I'll allow people to present. One other final comment I wanted to make was that I think we all agree that the real issue here is the level of service and what we want to accomplish in our county for the protection of our citizenry. We always have to balance that against what can we afford? And so, I'm all for, you know, we work very hard this county, trying to keep our costs down, and sometimes that means if we use outside vendors and they're less expensive, that's the direction we go. If we can bring it in-house and do it for less money, that's the direction we go. But the bottom line is always level of service and the cost. And I think that's, those are sort of guiding principles we need to apply in this situation as well. I realize we have a lot of money invested here in terms of equipment and so forth, but also, we have a very limited number of responses. We're paying, I mean, it may be too expensive for us to have this kind of, you know, business in this county for so few responses. I think the way the chief said it was, it's one and a half times a year for everybody, it wasn't just for the county, the county was like one time a year, is that correct? So at 1.5 incidents per year, and if it ends up costing us a million dollars to provide that service, maybe that's just too much money to spend, maybe our million dollars should be spent someplace else, and we use private enterprise. So I think we need to keep that in mind, we shouldn't just throw out the baby with the bathwater and automatically assume that the public agencies are the best provider of this service if the costs just don't justify it. So with that, I know there's people here who want to speak to us, and I will allow you to do so at this time, if you please come forward and give us your name and address, and perhaps your position.
Okay, I'm standing. No.
Oh, that's right, comedian.
Sorry.
Forgot.
Amy Shuckley in Visalia City Council, 425 East Oak. Good morning, gentlemen, first of all, I want to thank you for putting this highly important public safety issue on your agenda today, and I'm glad that we can talk about it and hopefully in the future, talk some more. As you're aware, the Visalia Fire Department, based on a gentleman's agreement, has provided hazardous materials response to the Tulare County for the past 15 years. The average cost through the years to maintain and operate hazmat response has been approximately $120,000. This is the cost, as you know, for equipment replacement, personnel training, specialty pay, and whatnot. Yes, we do receive Homeland Security grants, but in that, in the last 15 years, the net cost, deducting the Homeland Security grant funding to the City of Visalia, has been $1.8 million that the city has paid out. Early last year, our fire chief, Mark Nelson, was tasked with making the hazmat services fiscally efficient, and the simple solution he thought would be to meet with incorporated cities in Tulare County and ask them to share in the maintenance costs of the hazmat services. The cost sharings range from, I think, $1,800 approximately for Woodlake, up to this year, I keep hearing $40,000, $34,000 this year for the county of Tulare, $29,413 would be the share that the City of Visalia will pay. That's something that hasn't been said, we will continue, we also will pay into that maintenance cost. I'm glad you clarified that, Chairman Worthley, that it's not a retainer, these are ongoing costs associated with maintaining the equipment, calibrations, things like that. Unfortunately, things weren't as simple as we had, you know, we sometimes hoped them to be. There have been some things put on the table as far as fees set forth to the different agencies that have hazardous materials. Chief Nelson did meet with many agencies, many entities within the industrial park here in Visalia, people were more than willing to pay a $25 to $100 fee tacked on in addition to, you know, having local hazmat services. As we heard Chief Sunderland report, you have a few options, my thought is, why fix something that's not broken? You know, maybe we could tweak it a little bit, but to have highly trained professional response in your own backyard makes the most sense to me. As he said, the option of starting, you know, a new regional response would be quite costly, he quoted a million dollars. I'm glad to hear some of you are a little reluctant, I hope, with the private entity, and to me, I want to speak a little bit about that, that would be the biggest mistake and the poorest choice that could be made. Park Environmental, a few things that he neglected to say, you know, he talked about levels of service would be increased, I don't believe that would be true. Everybody that I've talked to, when I say Park Environmental, they say, well, they're a cleanup service. They don't, you know, we talked about entering with seven people with, according to fire codes, I think you're going to have a less level of service. At times, I think they sometimes respond with one or two people. But the thing I want to talk most about that wasn't said is, and you can do a simple Google search on Park Environmental, they are currently on a three-year probation from the federal government because one of their employees, posed as another trained employee, was not authorized to enter, entered a clandestine meth lab in San Francisco, and upon investigation, they found 12 gallons of GHB in his home, which is more commonly termed the date rate drug. They have been fined $400,000 by the Department of Toxic Services, are on probation, and they also falsified a statement regarding whether or not that employee was authorized. So personally, that's not somebody that I want to be doing business in Tulare County. And Mr. Anis, I heard you this morning on K-Tip mention, well, everybody's got bad employees here and there. It's my understanding that this employee was actually the son of the owner of Park Environmental, so it's a little closer than just a bad employee. So I think there's other people that want to talk, I don't know how much time we have, but I just hope that we can move on, and I hope, as you know, as you said, Supervisor Cox, let's not put politics or personality above public safety. Thank you.
Chair, can I ask her one question?
Yeah.
Amy, what, I'm looking at the new schedule I received this morning?
Right.
Where it shows Tulare County 34, 515. What happens if a couple of the other cities say, we're just not going to pay it, we're just not going to do it? What happens to the schedule? Because that's one of those unknowns, you know, let's say you have $50,000, or let's say you have $25,000 where the people say, we're just not going to contribute, participate, we'll sign a contract with Park, does that change, how does that change the schedule? Because that's one of the concerns, is you have $25,000 back out, oh, all of a sudden, are we responsible for another third?
Well, sure, I think that's why it's important, you know, nowadays, you know, everybody looks at, when we look at, we file for grants and apply for grants and things, people are looking at regional, people working together collaboratively. So hopefully, that doesn't happen, hopefully, we can get everybody on board so we don't have to run into that issue. Personally, you know, for the safety of the citizens of Visalia, I would not approve disbanding the hazmat unit, and I, you know, it's going to be coming before us, and I think we need to move forward, no matter who's on board, and if we do move forward, I know it's been thrown out there that we're not going to respond, Visalia will not ever not respond to somebody because they don't have, they haven't been pitching in their fair share, so to say. Does that answer you?
No.
No? Okay. Well, yes, people will have to pay more.
Your chief stood up, I mean, that's, you know, and that's one of the unknowns because, again, I've heard fire chiefs say, I'm not going to pay it, period. But then I've heard city council people that are their bosses on the radio saying, oh, yeah, we have to keep the local service. So again, I hear.
Well, then I think our city managers and councils need to get those fire chiefs in line. With that, Chief Nelson?
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Shuckley.
Morning, sir.
Morning, Chairman Worthley and Supervisor Cox. To answer your question.
We're being telecast across the world on the web, if you could give your name and address.
I'm sorry. Mark Nelson, Fire Chief, City of Visalia, 707 West Issequia.
Thank you.
Board of Supervisors, Chairman Worthley. To answer Supervisor Cox's question, that burden would not be then divided up among the other agencies that we're paying in, it's our position, based on your population base, a proportionate share is paid. If those agencies choose not to contribute into the agreement, then either one of the two things happens, the City of Visalia, we're just going to have to absorb that cost, we don't believe in penalizing the other agencies, or if that agency who chooses not to enter into agreement with us, they, we would still respond in need of an emergency, we will respond, as Vice Mayor Shuckley has said. However, there would be a maintenance fee that would be associated with that response to offset the cost of that program. But for, to specifically answer your question Supervisor Cox, we would not share that burden.
Thanks.
And I have a few comments I'll make a little bit later, but I think there are some other speakers.
All right, very good. Anyone else? You can use this microphone over here if you like. Morning.
House.
I'm sorry.
I have some handouts for the board. My name is Jan Pasquini, and I'm the Director of Safety at Cuiya Delta Healthcare District, and I'm here representing the district. Along with me today is Larry Carlin, our Director of Facilities, and Dan Elaine, our Director of the Emergency Room. We wanted to talk a minute about our support for the Visalia Fire Department Hazardous Materials Response Team, and the support they've given our healthcare district in the past few years. Because of this continued support they provided our facilities. They have gone to the extent of training our volunteer decontam team, they provided consulting advice regarding our management of hazardous materials. And from our district's standpoint, we're concerned with response time. When there have been incidences and people have been contaminated with chemicals, we need to get them deconed so that we can treat them. Here's some examples of that. When the Ruiz food incident happened a couple of years ago, an anhydrous ammonia release, which contaminated employees who needed emergency decontam to allow for emergency medical treatment, the Visalia Fire Department conducted this decon at their site and at our facility because patients leave these accidents and present themselves to our facility. If we had to wait how long it would take from Fresno for a team to get there, it would delay medical treatment and patient safety. They've also, when the patient arrived from a rural area after ingesting Paraquat, the Visalia Fire Department responded and conducted decontam to the patient, allowing for our staff to provide timely medical treatment. These are just in the past few years. We did have an anhydrous ammonia incident at our district, at the main campus. We did have an anhydrous ammonia incident at our district, at the main campus, when Cuiya Delta Healthcare District had an accidental release of anhydrous ammonia. The Visalia Fire Department responded, completely managing the incidents. While the anhydrous ammonia allows us to operate our cogeneration plant, ensuring that our healthcare has reliable energy, a release could be dangerous to our neighbors. So this is, the timeliness of the response and handling that incident is very important. Also, during the recent chlorine incident occurring in Tulare City, not only did the Visalia Fire Department respond to the scene, but also responded to our healthcare facility to assist in the decontamination of patients which arrived at our facility. They did require additional decontamination before we could treat them, and we needed to give timely medical attention. In summary, we do believe these incidents demonstrate the need for a local, well-trained, cohesive hazardous material response team to partner with. As Amy said, you know, why fix what's not broken? We also have a letter from Lindsey Mann, our Chief Executive Officer, that we'd like to present to you in the support of the district for these services.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good morning.
Nancy Lockwood, Executive Director of Visalia Economic Development Corporation, 500 North Santa Fe, excuse me, 500 North Willis in Visalia. I do know my own address. I have a letter which I'll submit into the record from the VEDC. A responsive, trained, and well-equipped team of professionals is essential to business in the Visalia Industrial Park and industry throughout Tulare County. The current program underneath the Visalia Fire Department provides that service. To bring a new regional team would require spending taxpayer funds unnecessarily. Hiring an out-of-the-area private contractor would put our businesses at risk. This firm has no track record as a first responder for hazmat situations. The solution is clear. A reasonable fee imposed upon the businesses would generate enough to fund the proportionate share for each city and the county. At a recent meeting of the VEDC's Industrial Roundtable Group, members were asked about their willingness to fund the retention of the program in its current form. All in attendance agreed. They wholeheartedly support the concept of a fee in order to continue this program without interruption or loss of expertise. A significant investment has been made, and the program worked. The VEDC encourages you to consider the concerns of our industrial businesses and the impact that loss of response time and this expertise can have on our economic development efforts. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Glenn Morris, Visalia Chamber of Commerce, 220 North Santa Fe. I want to share just some of the same concerns, I think, that you've heard, and Nancy outlined several of them. And talking with some of the businesses out there, they're very concerned about, you know, if the capacity disappears or moves to a much longer response time, they're going to be faced with increased costs in terms of insurance rates and things of that nature, so we have concerns there. Response time and quality of response, I think, becomes critical. You heard the example of, you know, contamination leaving the site and ending up at the hospital and requiring a second response. If they're not staffed adequately or properly trained, can you imagine if that had been a, you know, a life-threatening contamination that now is spreading through the community because it wasn't contained properly? So I think, in addition to the response time, the quality of response becomes important as well. We have concerns about what this would do to economic development and the types of businesses that would consider locating in Tulare County in the future absent the capability for response on those, you know, incidents that we hope never happen, but that we need to prepare for. Imagine, if you will, an incident where a train tips over in Goshen, and now Betty Drive and Highway 99 are shut down for who knows how long. Well, response is maybe coming eventually and could be adequate or could not, and they may have a four-man team that shows up, and now they've got to call for a backup team, and we're another hour. And now the industrial park in Visalia is shut down for the better part of a day, interrupting business. So the potential impacts on business are significant. You know, you mentioned costs, and while cost per incident, I think, is one measure you have to look at, ideally, the cost per incident on this should be out, should be uncalculatable because we don't want incidents. The goal is to have the capability, God forbid, you know, in a perfect world, they would never respond, but we still need that capability, and so I'm not sure that cost per incident is the proper metric here. I think you've got to look at what's the minimum capability that we've got to have to ensure safety in our communities. You've heard that businesses are willing to support a fee. Now, I don't know that it's often that the Chamber of Commerce and the economic development organizations come to you and tell you, "We will support a fee." But we are. We're willing to pay our fair share. I think it's got to be carefully calculated. I think there's been some thought expressed out there that, boy, if we could get 50 bucks, maybe we could get 75 and cover some other stuff, and that's not what we're here to support. We would support, though, a fee that is targeted at this capability. You know, Alan, you mentioned the notion of duplication, and I think we're starting to see that more and more in this area where multiple jurisdictions are trying to create the same services. And lately, we've started talking about multiple layering of fees. And so we're getting duplication of services and fees, and perhaps it's time, I'll go even further than, you talked about a unified, or coordinated program. You know, I'll suggest we go even further, and maybe it's time in this county that we begin looking at unified command models that exist in other parts of the country where public safety is managed cross-jurisdictional instead of each of the groups trying to maintain their own little component. And maybe it's time we start looking at some of those kind of broader solutions. And in closing, I think, Phil, you mentioned it's time to move on. We've been at this long enough. I think, you know, some of the chief mentioned six to eight months that this discussion's been going on. I think you're on point. I think it's time for the political elected leaders to give direction to the staff, and let's make some decisions, and let's get this taken care of. I don't think stretching it out for yet another period of study or research really does us any good. I think we know the issues. I think we know what needs to happen, and I would encourage you all to be the first to exercise some leadership here, and let's get some decisions made.
Morning again.
Good morning again. Mark Nelson, Fire Chief, City of Visalia. Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. O'Sell. I would first like to talk a little bit about our hazmat team. We currently have 21 highly-trained individuals. They're all trained to the California State Standard of Hazmat Specialists, which is initial 240 hours of training, plus there are hundreds of hours that go on during the year to maintain the training of those individuals. We have over 190 years of combined experience. We're averaging over nine years per employee. You can't replace experience. I've been a hazmat specialist in my career for over 12 years. I've been on regional response teams, and I know how valuable that experience is to help mitigate incidents. I could have the training and still not be able to operate efficiently and safely out in the field. I speak from experience, and I just, I wanted to let you know about that. You know, our department, and I think it's important to look at the differences, we're talking apples and oranges. We are an emergency response team. The example that Chief Sunderland gave of Park Environmental, they are a hazard mitigation team. They are not an emergency response team. They, they do not have the ability to respond to railcar incidents. We have railcars here. Weapons of mass destruction, we've had some incidents in Tulare County this past year that we've responded to. We are trained in those things. There was a comment made, too, that this cleanup company is not held to the same standards. That is not actually correct. In an emergency operation, an entry, this cleanup team is held to the same standards that we are. You must have seven people on scene with very specific roles, and I have a handout for you when I leave that will show the code, the regulation for that, and the language, and what those positions are. They have to have those. And speaking with Park Environmental, and I'm sure they're a good cleanup company, so I'm not trying to disparage them in any way, but they have admitted, they've made entries with one person. They show up with one or two people the majority of the time. This is unsafe for the citizens. It's unsafe for fire personnel on scene. They also do not do decontamination or mass decontamination. The Visalia Fire Department provides those as well. We provide masked decontamination and decontamination. We've done so for 15 years, actually for 18 years. We formed this agreement in 95, but we do have more experience than the 15 years. You talk about the 1.3 responses per year. I would state that you've had the request for 1.3 responses per year. I've been in this county for two years. I've seen incident after incident after incident that would require proper notification and the requirement of having an emergency hazmat response team respond, and there's been no requests. So I would argue that you do have a lot of incidents going on out there. I would wager a bet that it's more than 1.3 a year, and not having the proper education of the fire personnel, personnel out on the lines puts a tremendous liability for elected officials, for cities, for counties. And this isn't just about receiving funding for our program. This is about outreach with participating agencies to train and educate people so they understand what they're dealing with, they understand the requirements, the laws, the regulations. And so the 1.3, it is true. I know we responded here to this chambers less than a year ago when you had a Freon leak that that could have been dangerous. We responded to the recycling plant a couple of times this last year, so that's three I can remember right off the bat. So I think it's more than 1.3, but I just wanted to clarify that. There's also another myth that this is a free service with this private company. They will not respond unless they have a billable party. So you're going to have to get a PO, get a billable reparty before they respond. They don't do this for free. They're a private company. They charge. The response times are two and a half, three, four hours to get enough people on scene. We have a standard of 10 minutes or less to be on the road with seven highly-trained people 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We will always respond. I'm interested in the chief's comments that they have trained folks and would like to possibly join the hazmat team or help augment some staffing. The 21 we have, quite frankly, isn't enough. I would support, down the road, once we have agreements in place, to consider expanding the team even greater, greater numbers because it is needed out there. Seven bodies get eaten up very quickly. On August 2, 2010, the Visalia City Council will consider a proposal of the new hazmat response team agreement that will then be presented to local agencies in Tulare County. The recommendation will be that we continue our service, and we encourage local agencies to contribute their proportionate share to help pay for our maintenance costs. Agencies that do not wish to enter into this agreement will still have the ability to receive help, but will pay a higher maintenance rate if called in the event of emergency. And I know there's been some myths out there that we're not going to respond. We have never said that, and I wanted to clarify that today. So I want to thank you for your time, allowing me to speak, and I'm very hopeful that we can work together and resolve this issue and provide the best public safety to the citizens of our community. Thank you.
Chief, how is proportionate share defined?
Proportionate share is based on population. It is from the California Department of Finance. Those are the numbers we used. And so I don't know if you had the recent analysis that we did. We do one every year, and this year it went down $15,000. And so if, Chairman, if you have this, I can give this to you.
I guess one question I had was that if the cause is primarily from industrial or commercial, use something like that, there's a, there's not a direct correlation between population. I mean, you could have people who live in their homes, and if that's not going to be a cause of being called out, if it's primarily industrial, commercial-type enterprises, then I'm wondering if that's, if there's not a better, I, that's just something for me internally to take in, because I think that's some of the stuff that we need to talk about. I very appreciate we brought this to the board for our discussion, but I disagree with the idea that we're at the point where we can make a firm decision, because I think there's a lot of discussion, discovery yet to be done and discussions, and I'm all in favor, I think someone made the comment, of continuing to support Visalia for a period of time so we can get all these things worked out. But I think there's a need for a comprehensive review of other services provided by other agencies and what those costs are and putting that all into the mix. I think there's lots of things for us to discover yet and discuss, and one of those might be proportionate share. If Visalia has, let's just say, 80% of the industrial, commercial development, I'm just throwing out numbers, whatever it is, or 60%, maybe they should bear a larger percentage, not, not based upon population, but based upon who are the actual causes of the need for the service. Things like that, to me, need to be talked about before we actually come to a conclusion. But I appreciate the opportunity to have this aired publicly and to discuss it publicly, and I've been very concerned about the fact that there have been a lot of things said about the Board of Supervisors and so forth, when we've never had this come before us. This is the first time this matter's really been brought to, brought to us for public consideration, so.
And I appreciate the opportunities. We've been grappling with this issue for 16 months. I think this is my 49th meeting regarding this, so I would welcome closure to this, but I surely understand you're coming in the 11th hour here, need to be updated and have more dialogue, so.
I've got one question, Mr. Chair. Chief, what is the total cost of this program, would you say, per year? The hazmat program that you run?
The total expenditures are $151,000. The revenues that we received last fiscal year was approximately, well, not approximately, it was $41,400. We received operational revenue of $5,800. That's for the response money that we recovered. With, for a total revenue of $47,200, we minus that from the $51,200, which leaves us with $104,000 for the actual cost of the program.
Okay. Now, how many, how much of those costs would you say would be broken down between, say, stipends, equipment, and training?
Sure. The stipends for the 21 members are, is $28,000 a year. Medical costs are almost $6,000 a year. You have to have comprehensive medical examinations every year. The actual training costs, because we applied a lot of these to the grant money, was only $400, but that doesn't count for the cost of sending the employee to the training and the time committed to the training. Operational expenses, mostly equipment, things of that nature, about $60,000 a year. I know we just wrote a check for $20,000 for equipment calibration. We don't, we don't, we don't receive that money back. We're going to have to buy new suits that are going to be another 20, $25,000. We never see that recovery. That's just something, as Vice Mayor Shuckley had said, you know, 1.8 million over 15 years, that was the net cost after grant monies. The lasting fuel maintenance was about $1,620. And there was a comment about the incentive pay, that that was a deal killer. I will say, I've been on regional hazmat teams in the Bay Area and in Northern California, in the Central Valley. This is one of the lowest stipends I have ever seen. We're talking less than $200 per month for the extra training, accountability, responsibility, and actual danger. These are the folks putting the Level A encapsulated suits going into these incidents that you and I would not want to go into. It's very dangerous, and it is industry standard for there to be some type of compensation to offset that. So I wanted to offer that as a reason of why there is that compensation there.
Well, thank you for that. You know, I agree with Supervisor Worley that an element of this discussion is going to have to include who has the largest number of businesses that utilize hazardous materials. I was just going to ask your thought in terms of what Chief Sunderland had mentioned about variance and adjusting to the fee that's charged per response, maybe to account for the stipends, the equipment, the training, all of that sort of thing. What is your thought on that, on that line?
We've had extensive discussions about that actual issue. The concern is, there is a disincentive to call, because if you have this, all these fees now that are going to be associated per call basis, the call cost for incident is going to be extremely high. If there is not a billable party, agencies may not want to call because it's going to be such a hard, a high bill. The other issue or concern I have is about business. Now, we're going to really just load up the businesses with this huge bill because in 99% of the cases, the agency we bill turns around and bills the spill or the generator of the spill. And agencies do have the ability, the city of Tulare, when we bill them for a hazmat response, they calculate all the time and effort and equipment that they've had on scene. They tack that onto our bill and bill the responsible party. So there already is a process, a mechanism in place for you to recoup your costs.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That brings up the question of billing.
That brings up the question of billing.
I'm sorry?
The billing question. I wish my insurance agent was here today to ask him what liability my insurance company has if I have a hazmat call into my business. So, I believe there is an avenue for the business owner to recoup the cost of the service, so it's not borne directly on his direct pocketbook. So, I'm not overly concerned unless I get new information about you billing or the hazmat unit billing directly to the businesses versus billing to the cities or to the county. I think that's where the bill belongs. If there's someone that can be recognized as a responsible party, that bill should go directly to that firm.
And you bring up a very interesting point. We've spoken to the insurance industry. The cost for that type of insurance is extremely expensive, twelve hundred to fourteen hundred dollars per year, and very few, I think it's less than three percent of businesses, actually have purchased that insurance. So, you're right. I think for the twelve hundred thousand dollars to have that insurance policy would be a benefit, but that's something that each business owner's gonna have to make that decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is for you. I think we need to give real clear direction. Every one of these folks I sit in these meetings with, I like. They're good people. I can talk to each one of them. I think we need to give clear direction of how they need to proceed. Maybe it's not the chief sitting in a room and working this out. Maybe this is them having a designee do this for them. I just, I don't want to go back into that room again, is what I'm saying.
Well, I think you brought up an interesting segue, Mr. Cox, because my CEO's been, our CEO's been down there nodding his head at me like he wants to speak, and I think that might lead into perhaps your comment.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. You know, I thought I'd add these comments in, just to add some clarity to the issue and talk about the history of what brought us to this point. First, I want to thank our Chief Sunderland for his presentation of tipping through the tulips to a certain extent. He did a good job. And recognizing the level of coordination in this county and in the fire service, the level of coordination's tremendous, both in fire and in public safety. And it'd be nice to see that level of coordination in other matters, such as the general plan and issues of that matter, that case. But just to briefly walk through the sequence of events to a certain extent, because this has been going on for way too long, and I agree. When we were first notified, the county notified that the city of Visalia was wanting to start charging for hazmat services. I contacted Chief Sunderland, Ray Bullock, who oversees environmental services, and quite frankly, our OES staff. It was unanimous from that group that they would be okay with and were recommending to me, as the emergency council director, if I'm misquoting, that we consider using park environmental and regional services from Kern County and from Fresno County. Against their recommendation, I wanted to, I wanted the emergency council group, which is staffed by, not staffed, but comprised of the fire chiefs in the county, to discuss this matter, because I was somewhat comfortable with moving to a regional provider instead of a provider that's located in the county. In that meeting, it was pretty clear, the group, the entire group wants a local responder. They just don't want to pay for it, nor do they want to provide it themselves, because it does require a lot of cost and a lot of time. In that meeting also, it was embraced somewhat that we look at our COOPA fees that our environmental health folks charge as a vehicle, a fee vehicle, to pay for this program. And it was, as you might expect, it was unanimous around the table to look into that. The group that was created with Chief Nelson's involvement looked into the COOPA process and realized that COOPA was not a vehicle to use going forward to pay for the service. So, how else were we gonna charge it? Well, we were gonna, that would require each city to charge its businesses inspection fees and use those fees to help pay for hazmat. I think, to speak to the frustration of, in the level of tension that you were experiencing, which I experienced also, I think that, you know, these agreements that were made that are considered to be, you know, gentleman agreements, they were formalized JPA agreements that were negotiated by fire chiefs at the time to provide these services for free and to use grant monies to pay for training and equipment to help offset the cost to participating agencies. There was never any discussion over those years about charging for these fees until recently. And I think that, in my opinion, not being in the fire service, generated a certain level of frustration. And in that meeting, there were, emotions were running high. There were some threats of even including mutual aid, which is, in my opinion, what is generating the level of frustration and consternation that we're experiencing today. So, and I will, let me finish my comments by saying, we are discussing, we're meeting with the city of Visalia to talk about partnering with a consolidated dispatch, perhaps. And I think there are other areas that we could probably partner on and reduce our overall costs. So, I just wanted to make those comments to add some clarity to what brought us here. Has it been a long time? Yes. Is it something I should have brought to this board a long time ago? I wish I had, believe me. But I appreciate Supervisor Cox's involvement and wanting to come to a solution. I think we can, at the end of the day, work something out that I think would reimburse all the participating agencies, the cities of Dinuba, Tulare, the county, and the city of Visalia for providing hazmat services to the county residents. Thank you.
I didn't want to stop public comment. There's another gentleman wanted to speak to us. Sir, come forward, please.
My name's Christian Ortiz, seven oh seven West Sequia. Just thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board of supervisors. This, just a little prepared statement regarding emergency hazmat response in the county of Tulare. This document is being distributed on behalf of the Executive Board of International Association of Firefighters, Local thirty-seven nineteen Visalia Firefighters Association, to address several items regarding the ongoing issue regarding emergency hazardous materials response in Tulare County. The Visalia Fire Department Hazardous Materials Team is comprised of twenty-one members, nine of which work at an assigned station, which houses the Hazardous Materials Response Unit. Having an assigned hazmat station allows for a ready-to-respond company twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. All of the team members receive department-sponsored training to the hazmat specialist level, which is the highest level that you can be trained to. There's also an added weapons of mass destruction component that they are offered the training for. With their hazardous materials training, several of the team members are also paramedics. A paramedic is able to provide the highest level of prehospital medical care in Tulare County, as you may already be aware of. The team is also equipped to deal with mass decontamination, hazardous material monitoring, sampling, identification, and mitigation in accordance with federal, state, and local guidelines. It is the goal of Visalia Fire Department to respond with a minimum of seven hazmat team members to any incident. The team's roles and responsibilities are done in accordance with the Incident Command System requirements in an effort to provide the safest and most efficient operating environment for members of the community and first responders. It is this organization's opinion that any and all privatization of emergency response and/or hazard mitigation puts the citizens of Tulare County at risk. It also puts the first responder agencies of Tulare County at risk by not allowing them to utilize the highest level of local resource to assist them during an emergency. The Visalia Fire Department Hazardous Materials Team has responded to incidents in Tulare County for over fifteen years with professionalism and pride. We look forward to continue serving this community and the citizens of Tulare County.
Thank you.
Can you submit a copy of that to Mr.?
Oh, yes. Are you able to give us a copy of that letter?
Absolutely. We'd like it.
Just give it to our clerk, please. Good morning, Mike.
Chairman Worthley, supervisors, Mike Lane, ten forty-six North Atwood Street. And I'm here to wrap up our presentation, but we really appreciate your patience with us and hearing us out, and we really appreciate having this opportunity. I kind of inherited this about six months ago when I came onto the city council. And as Chief Nelson has said, he's been at it for a lot longer than I have, and so I may be a little bit naive, but I wanted to come in and just express my goodwill. I also had come in and met with Supervisor Cox about ways that we, cities and county, can work together, including the general plan. As Mr. Russo mentioned, I don't want us to be in adversarial situations, either with the county, with you, or with the individual cities. I don't think that's in anyone's best interest. And I'm actually sorry, in one sense, that this incident has risen to that level, but on the other hand, I think sometimes that kind of conflict may force us to come to the table and really negotiate some good deals and have a more comprehensive approach that will take into account other potential services. I think agreements that we're entering into fifteen years ago, we're just in a totally different fiscal universe right now. And so, we do need to reengage in that, and that doesn't mean we just want what's best for Visalia. We're willing to open it up across the board, because we're all getting hit with additional expenses, regulations, higher demands in terms of what the fire code calls for and the kinds of responses we need to make. I would point out, too, that it's not just the urban populations, because we've got ninety-nine that runs through our county, Highway one ninety-eight and sixty-three, and we've got rail service that also carry hazardous materials, and so we need to look at that as well. It is, it is a countywide concern, I think, in terms of protecting our residents and taxpayers. And that's really what I'm here to say, is that, just to wrap up, collaboration, consolidation, and cooperation are the key words going forward, I think, for every jurisdiction and agency. I want us to be a part of that. In the past, I haven't been good at it as well. I've offended people from time to time, and I apologize for that. But what I'd like to see, if we can come together and work through this, I do agree, though, that the subcommittee, the hazmat subcommittee, has become toxic, and I think we need to work at that, and we're willing to do our part and to apologize and ask for forgiveness, and to see if we can get back to the table and work through some of these issues in a professional way. And I believe our residents deserve this high level of service, and the taxpayers really deserve that we all come together and work together to get the best deal possible to do that. And so, I think if we can just put any egos or hurt feelings aside, I'd like to encourage us to come back to the table and to work through these issues without having to reinvent the wheel or without having to go through additional startup costs. I will never sign off on anything that says the Visalia Fire Department won't respond anywhere in the county. We're committed to do that for everyone, because we do feel we're all in this together. And so, I want to extend a hand and ask that we can work through this at the highest levels here at the county and find a reasonable solution that's fair and just for everyone. Thank you for your time.
And I fully agree with you. I think, you know, conflict often is the cause for coming together and making resolution. I do think that there's a need for a comprehensive review of this matter, and I think it should be done probably at the professional staff level. I don't mean fire chiefs, I mean our C.A.O. and the city managers, because I think that some of these things are just basically plug-in-the-numbers. For instance, I want to know what we're spending as a county for providing our part of this pie of special services, and I think the city of Tulare should have the same, and the city of Dinuba should have the same. And that should be part of the total overall cost, and then we can, instead of just trading dollars, we can just, you know, we can do the math and deal with that, related to the issue of people being up and down ninety-nine. That argues for the fact that we should be charging people more for services, because we're asking the county, the people of Tulare County, when I say it in a general sense, not just the county residents, but the city residents in Tulare County, to pay for a service that we have nothing to do with. Trucks going up and down ninety-nine, you know, probably ninety percent have nothing to do with Tulare County. They're just driving through. Why should we bear those costs? So, that argues for a greater part of the cost being borne by them. I think there's a lot of things for discussion, and I think at the end, I think we will have a resolution that would be beneficial to all.
And our commitment is to respond and then to try to bill later and not to wait until we can figure out who the responsible party is, and we'll need your help to work through those issues.
Chairman, after the comments made today, I do withdraw my objection to the forty thousand dollars. You have twenty-seven men, so that is reasonable for the pay. I want to echo what the chairman has said. This issue is a little bit bigger than just that unit in Visalia. It's a combined response by people who put other assets into the pot. So, I'm glad we had the discussion, but I would like to say, I'm willing to go till January one, two thousand and eleven, but I think we need resolution of this issue as soon as possible. And we've faced this issue before with the ambulance service in Tulare County. So, I know we can be successful on working these issues out, because there were a lot of things that were brought up today, quite frankly, I haven't thought of, that are very important pieces of the program we need to put in place. So, I'd like to thank everyone that participated today for bringing up these issues, and I would suggest that we continue our contract until...
Yeah, we don't have this as an action item today, so I think we would need to bring it back, perhaps for an action item to continue with the...
But we did have an action item.
Well, it says, "Request for review alternatives." No, I don't think we have an action item. Authorized negotiation of a new agreement. So, you'd have to bring something back to us actually for further action. I don't think we're, I think we can give you direction today, but I don't know that we can actually...
The last of the resolution does say authorize fire chiefs negotiate new service agreements. So, I think if we do the four recommended today, although we didn't identify, I guess the preferred option we identified was to go back to the table.
Yeah, my suggestion is rather going back to the table as we have in the past, that we do it at the C.A.O., city manager level, and they can get the information from their various chiefs and so forth as far as the numbers. But I think, I think, I, do you feel, I believe we've given direction here today.
Yeah. This concludes my presentation, and I'd like to thank the city of Visalia for helping me make that.
Okay. So, is there any, is there any further comments by board members? Do we have an understanding of going forward? I agree with what Supervisor Shida said, which is, we need to have a date certain where we want to get this matter wrapped up. In the meantime, we realize these costs are ongoing. We're willing to put up our share of the costs while we're doing that, but I think we need to address all these issues and come back with a comprehensive plan.
As we leave here today, Mr. Chair, we've directed Mr. Russo to take care of this issue in behalf of the county. Thank you.
So, I don't know if we need to take any further action. That's the direction. Thank you all for being here today. Very good discussion, and I appreciate it. Okay, that will bring us then to our last untimed item. Rita, you've been sitting for a long time waiting for us. We should have probably taken you ahead of this. Thank you for waiting around.
Basically, since I have good news.
Treasurer, tax collector, et al.
Not often I have good news, so I'm pleased to come here today. And this is what I use? The other one? Okay. It's still on here. Here I am. There we go. Now I got it up. Morning, Mr. Chair, board members. Mr. Russo, Ms. Bales Lang. Sorry, Kathleen. I'm Rita Woodard, Tulare County Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Registrar Voters, two twenty-one South Mooney Boulevard, Room one oh one E, Visalia. And I want to let, know on the record that last year, I too signed the letter donating one point nine two percent of my salary back to the county for the equivalent furlough amount, and I've already signed the letter for this year. It's on my desk, in anticipation of passage of the resolution you did today. But today, we're here with good news to update the board on the accomplishments of the Treasurer, Tax Collector's office over the last few years. It was exciting news to us, and we wanted to bring it forward so you could get excited, too. It's not something we get to do very often, so we usually come in with woes and everything else, so it's good. There we go. In general statistics, the average balance for the fiscal year oh nine-ten was eight hundred seventy-four million dollars in the treasury pool, and we earned an average rate of return for nine thousand ten of two point seven eight percent on those monies, or two point five eight percent net of fees. The tax collector mailed one hundred and eighty-six thousand tax bills and eighteen thousand nine hundred reminder notices. We helped thirty-seven thousand nine hundred customers at the counter in calendar year two thousand and nine. That's a lot of people, yes, but the good news is still. Incoming phone calls were forty-nine thousand. Also not on that sheet is that we received over three hundred and twenty-three thousand payments in the annual year two thousand and nine. It's a lot of work. General overview of accomplishments are here, and I'll go into them into detail. The treasury received a... The treasury received a comprehensive annual financial report for the year with no audit exceptions, again, from the outside auditors. It's been consistent since I took office. The first year, we cleaned up everything, and it stayed that way. Have good people there. The investment pool had a better-than, a bad-average rate of return for the economy we're in over investments of other county treasurers, and we did a comparison here in this chart of the other counties that we typically use for comparison for salaries and other things, plus some local counties. And you'll see there that we're on the top of our earnings rate. Some were very low in this economy. We still have safety, liquidity, and yield in mind, always the safety of our money, but still getting a decent return of 2.78%. Better customer service in the tax collector side has been seen. We utilized the new VOIP, VoIP phone system. We also changed the tax bill format, made it easier for people to understand. And we utilized the Union Lockbox in LA for the payment processing of the majority of the payments. We had an additional, the electronic funds transfer, the EFTs, through the official payments for the tax payments, in addition to using credit cards that people can pay by online. We also added the curbside payment drop boxes outside at both the courthouse location and Government Plaza, and they're being used quite a bit for registrar voters and for the tax payments. Even when I walk out into the parking lot, I get stopped by people saying, "Thank you" for the drop box. They have to unload the kids in the van and haul them into the courthouse and then haul them back out into the parking lot. We've had increased efficiencies by making the checks deposit quicker through the LA lockbox and the payments posted online quicker. That's what's reduced the phone calls. We partnered with AARP, CSAT, and student programs to help keep the costs down and to answer the phone calls instead of having it go to machines all the time. There are times when we get quite a few calls in one day, and it still has to go to the machines, but that answering the phone call has saved quite a bit of frustration for I wanted to mention, too, that our in-house equipment for processing payments broke down last April for three weeks, right in our second busiest time of the year. So it's for sale now, if somebody wants to buy it, and I'll have another officer put people in. It's going to go down to LA, let them process it. So there was some snags in April, where that three-week period where in-house, we couldn't process some payments. So we've gone around that and stepped up and done better things on it. These changes can be reflected in the number of the incoming phone calls we now receive. Okay? The incoming calls are down 34% in 2009 calendar year over 2008. Isn't that great? 34%. Okay? And an additional 17.5% in 2010 over the same period last year. This is a reduction of 30,000-plus calls since January of 2009 because of the improvements and the staff that we have helping. The reduction in the lobby traffic is also down. It's down 12% in calendar year 2009 versus 2008.
Yes, ma'am.
There's the fireman. And it's also down an additional 14% in 2010 over the same time last year. These percentages translate to 8,300 fewer taxpayers since 2008 who feel the need to come into our office to make payments. The information we're getting out of them is helpful, the revised tax bills and the extra delinquent notices going out with the information on it for them. They don't have to come in and call in as much. Moving forward, what we'd like to do is to review the current cashiering system and possibly replace it countywide. This will speed up the process at the counters and also would help departments in the outlying areas. They won't have to come in and make their deposits as often, because they could scan their checks where they are, have it go into the bank automatically. They can do the deposit online and save time and money for all the county departments and the county in general. So we're looking at that. And we also want to do an overall review of the workflow to see what made, what additional improvements can be made in the treasurer tax collector side. Our goals are still better service to the customers. Better service to our customers are the treasury pool participants and all the Tulare County taxpayers. We want to keep the net county cost as low as possible and work with new and current technology to streamline the office workflow. I want to say that we're so proud of our employees. They have strong hearts and dedication to the constituents of Tulare County and to Tulare County itself, and I want to thank them for their hard work. Without them and their hard work, we could not have done this. And we have really improved the service to the constituents of Tulare County, and we just wanted to come and let you know that we're not sitting there spinning around, just running that money into the bank, but we're doing positive results here.
Thank you, Rita. Appreciate that. It is good information. Mr. Manipul?
I just want to make one comment. You know, I applaud you for coming and telling us what you've been doing, because so often the auditor controllers just kind of looked at as being off in your own little world. But I did take the opportunity to go on a tour and meet several of your employees throughout both of the offices, and I just want to commend those employees, because they do work hard, they do have priority of customer service, and you're improving efficiencies and the office is doing very well. But like you said, it only happens because of the people and because of the employees, and especially during a difficult economic time like we're seeing right now, where they're understaffed and overworked, they still continue to go into work with a positive attitude, and we have to continue to work to do the things that we can that are non-financial, but to improve the working environment for those people so that they can stick around and keep a positive attitude and continue to provide positive service and good customer service to the Tulare County taxpayers. So thank you very much, and pass on our thanks to your employees as well.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you. Cox?
Real quick, we're taking Visa, MasterCard, debit cards now. My kids don't even know what a checkbook is, and it seems like that's the way society is paying now. Are we all set up pretty much county-wide to take that?
Not county-wide, but in our office, we take the credit card on the phone and on the internet. We outsource that with official payments. They're coming in next, tomorrow afternoon, actually, to renegotiate, and the good news is that they're offering a lower percentage cost to the taxpayers, try to beat them down some more.
That's great. It seems to streamline things. I mean, I literally, I bet you I have children who have had those accounts for years who don't even know where their checkbook is.
We actually got them to give us a couple of free...
That's great. You got to find a way to work down those fees, because I still write checks to avoid the fees, so try to negotiate those down even more.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rita.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I appreciate it. Concludes our general regular meeting. Now we have closed session items, council.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. You have items A through F on your board's closed session agenda. I do not anticipate any, oh, I'm sorry. There will be an announcement regarding item E. I do need to state for the record that in regard to item E, the county council's office provided assistance to the department head in the administrative hearing on that matter, and accordingly will not be advising the board or attending closed session when the board considers that matter.
Very good.
Excuse me, I just burped. You didn't have to.
Hi, this is Jim Rousseau, county administrative officer, reporting out a closed session on item E to consider the disciplined dismissal or release of a public employee on a motion by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. The board voted unanimously to dismiss the sheriff's deputy.